Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Can all of our students just stand? Awesome. We used to do this song. And I want you guys to commend yourself and then we're gonna open with the pledge. And I know it's a little preschool-ish, but I just wanna see you do it. So, give yourself a pat, pat, pat on the back, back, back for a job well done. Toot, toot. Thank you. We're now opening with our pledge of allegiance, everyone.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh my goodness, they're on it. We will go right into our next item on our agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Hanson.
Well, I just wanna say the Bulldogs are in the house and we can't wait to hear from you guys tonight. Real quick, Board, I've been giving you updates on our strategic plan. We had our advisory committee a little over two weeks ago. Great feedback from some of our community leaders. We are engaging with that elements to continue progress on our plan. The goal is to release this or launch this to our staff on November 5th. We were talking about iLearn checkpoints. That was today. Did any of our students take the iLearn checkpoint? How'd it go? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay, I see a lot of thumbs ups. Good job. We'll hopefully get that data back soon so that we can see our student strengths and where we need to focus. Most likely that will happen after the window closes. Parents in the audience, just remember that our parent teacher conferences are October 3rd and 4th. Fall intercession break is October 7th through the 18th. We finished our iRead lunch recognitions yesterday. Thank you, Airmark, for providing lunch for all 10 of our elementary schools and celebrating their great work. Board, our Hawthorne Open House is next Thursday, September 26th from 6 to 8. We'll send you more information on that. I wanna give a shout out to our Warren Central High School Performing Arts. The Gold Brigade Marching Band and Guard earned first place at their first competition of the season at Lawrence Central last weekend. They also earned caption awards for best music, best visual, and best general effect. So, congratulations to our students performing in that. Board and community, next week, September 25th, our Warren Central Fall Orchestra Concert will be held at the Warren Performing Arts Center at 7:00 PM. The next night, our Warren Central Choirs will have their fall concert on September 26th at 7:00 PM. You can get tickets online. And I just wanna give a Warren Will shout out. You know, attendance is a high priority for us. August of 2022, our attendance rate was 93.2. Last year it was 93.83 and this year, I am proud to say, it's 95.02. Keep up the good work. I wanna give a shout out to our high school. Last week was homecoming week and if you got a chance to see or hear anything that was going on there, it was an awesome week. Home Fest, thank you to our Warren PTSA for putting on an awesome Home Fest. Thank you to all of our students and families who participated in that. One more Warren Will shout out to Laura Buckwright and the Warren Central High School admin. We were one of five districts in Marion County to receive the Fairbanks Foundation College Matters reversing the trend grant. And we'll have more information on that coming up. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. We will now go into our school showcase/spotlight, Brookview Elementary.
There we go. President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, thank you for having us out to showcase the amazing things that we're doing at Brookview. We would like to start our presentation with an introduction of our new school song. Our goal at Brookview is to empower our students and let them know it is their school. A school song brings a sense of unity and pride to the Brookview students. Beginning of the year, we hired Mr. JT, Mr. Jeremy Thomas. He's a Warren grad. And we had some conversation and I gave him a task to write us a Brookview song. And he did a fantastic job and so I can't wait for you guys to hear this. So, students and Mr. JT, if you guys would come on up. Brooklyn, if you could join us. All right, give it up for our Bulldogs. Great job, guys. All right. So when I tell you that the kids have taken that and ran with it, you can see how excited they are to sing it. I come in in the morning, like 7, 7:15, and they're in the YMCA and I can hear them singing it, like, just for fun. So like, they really love it. They knocked it out of the park. And I think it does a great job of highlighting what our kiddos are doing at Brookview. I wanna now go over some of the achievements from last year. Last year was my first year as principal at Brookview. Starting with our iRead data, we scored, we had 82%, almost 83% of our third grade students that passed iRead last year. That's a growth of 15% just over a one-year span. 100% of our third grade life students, they take a test called IAM. It is the comparable test to iLearn. We had 100% of our third graders pass the math IAM. As Dr. Hanson said, attendance is a big push for us. Our attendance last year overall was 93.4%. That's a growth of 1.1%. And we're actually currently sitting at 96% for the school year this year, yeah. Chronic absenteeism, if you don't know, is students that have missed more than 25 to 30 days of school. We know when kids are not at school, they're not learning, they're not growing. Our team, Ms. Townsell, Ms. Henley, Ms. Cook, our team around our kids, they decreased our chronic absenteeism by 7.3%. I wanna say that is 37 students at Brookview. Yeah, that's fantastic. Oh, sorry. And then another thing that I wanna highlight, Brookview started a partnership with KG Kids last year. Hopefully you all have heard of them and you've seen some of the things they've done around the district. Together, we provided every student kindergarten through fourth grade with over 12 books to take home and put in their class, or their home library last year. To put that into perspective, that's over 6,000 books just at Brookview alone. KG's kids ended up extending their partnership with all nine of our elementary schools, impacting every elementary student in Warren Township, which is awesome. So, we take some pride in that and our goal is to partner with them and help instill love of reading to our kiddos. All right, so where do we go from here? Our priorities, iRead, we still have a heavy focus on that. Our goal is to get 85 or more percent passing of our third graders for iRead this year. We are hosting three iRead nights for our families. This year, we had the first one on the 10th of September. And they are a progression to continue to give information, skills, and strategies and materials for parents to use at home with their kids to help them be ready to pass that test when we take it. We started with early tutoring. We are tutoring our second and third graders currently. And we are tutoring about 66 students currently at Brookview, which is a really good number. Again, just getting them ready for those tests. iLearn, you know, to be honest, our iLearn scores were not where we wanted them to be last year, right? I think Brookview, the district everywhere. So our focus is gonna be on Indiana State Standards this year. An increase in iLearn scores by 10% or more, and that's both math and language arts. We're gonna be having a tutoring session specific to the Indiana academic standards and to help push the iLearn scores after fall break. And so we're gonna be highlighting some kids based on last year's iLearn scores and the data that we have from this year with the checkpoints. The last thing is providing professional development to our teachers around lesson planning and just unpacking those standards, helping them better understand and equip them to better teach our students. The last thing that we wanna do at Brookview, and hopefully this is, this is apparent in some of the stuff that you've already seen, we wanna create experiences for students. We wanna put the fun back in school. We wanna make sure that we're supporting our teachers and just like I tell my staff, I want Brookview to feel like Disneyland. Nobody doesn't wanna go to Disneyland. I want Brookview to be that place where people wanna come and they wanna be and I gotta shut my doors down because we're too full. And so that's our goal for Brookview. All right, so our new staff, we have some of them here. We had a new ML position that we filled with Ms. Jennifer Pabon. We have Mr. Jeremy Thompson, who you guys saw. He is a Warren grad and he is our new music teacher. Ms. Alexis Harris is a new kindergarten teacher at Brookview. Ms. Jessica Warland is a new first grade teacher. Ms. Trinay Burns, who's here right up front, a new first grade teacher. Mr. Patrick Brown, new fourth grade teacher at Brookview. And Ms. Denella Stinson, she's a returning Warren teacher in our fourth grade. So can we give it up to our new teachers at Brookview? And as you can see from the picture, oh, I think I forgot one, third grade Ms. Billy Chipman as well. So I don't wanna leave anybody out. But as you can see from the picture, they have a lot of fun. That's them at like their first professional development day. And Ms. Schwartz could attest to it, they had a blast. So, that's the kinda people we want at Brookview, right? We wanna bring that energy. So what's going on at Brookview? We have a lot going on at Brookview. We have grants, iRead nights, guest readers, kindness captains, book vending machines, books and nooks, trunk or treat, Bulldog Breakfast, we have an ADHD and an ODD symposium that we held last year, fourth grade celebrations, Boomer visits our school, we have Turkey Bingo, Spring Fling, Family Heritage Night. And I'm gonna talk about a few of those things throughout. All right, our literacy events. Books and nooks is something that we started last year. All this is, is this is an avenue for students to stay after school. We create fun spaces for them to read and hang out with their friends, find a book. We either provide a book or they bring their own book. We also invited our high schoolers to come and play some literacy games with them as well. We had a really good turnout last year and it was something that the kids enjoyed doing. We set up tents, we had bean bags, just a lot of fun places for them to read. And as you can see, kinda in that top right-hand corner, the tent was packed. They really enjoyed getting in there with their flashlights and reading. So, again, our goal is just to continue to promote that reading. We have Boomer Visit. He visited last year. He just visited this past September 10th as well. And it just hypes up the kids. He does a show, he does his flips and dunks and passes out, you know, basketballs and jerseys and things to the kiddos. But he also promotes a love of learning and reading and making sure that they're studying and they're trying their best. And so again, the kids have a blast at that. And, you know, Boomer is somebody that they recognize. And the whole goal is that we're instilling that love of school and we're bringing that fun back to school. Our iRead night, we promote, or sorry, we provide information and resources to parents to ensure that they were informed and well-equipped to help support their students. The bottom middle picture, that's our cafeteria. You can see how packed it was. Our iRead night turnout was fantastic last year. Our parents really responded to the support that our kids needed. And that showed in our iRead scores. And so I appreciate all of our parents for being on board with Brookview because with your support, that's how we're gonna continue to grow and achieve. Guest readers, last year we had Kylan Grantson come in, the tight end from the Colts, and read. We had parents come in and read. We had news anchors. We were on the news several times. We had the governor's wife come in and read. We had school board members, some of you. Somebody brought a chicken. No, no names, Ms. Triplett. And, you know, and many others, right? And so we had a lot of people coming into our building, a lot of different occupations, a lot of different people that students look up to. Again, just reading to our kids and they thoroughly enjoyed it. We had Rowdy come in. Of course, his person read because Rowdy doesn't talk. But just things like that. And, you know, hats off to, we have some of our kindergarten team here, hats off to them. They did a really good job of getting a lot of those people in, so great job kindergarten. All right, next one, family events. All right, so trunk or treat. We have our trunk or treat coming up October 25th. I invite you all out. Write that date down. You can either come and have a trunk and pass out candy, or you can just come and enjoy. But last year, we saw over 400 people come through Brookview for our trunk or treat. We set it up. We had all of our parents and some of our staff members that provided the trunk. They decorated and then we passed out candy to all the kids. Again, that's October 25th. We do a Bulldog Breakfast every year. This is really just a, you know, a relaxed way to get to know our families and for the families to get to know our staff. That is the whole purpose of it, is just to bring them in. We feed them donuts and we just have a conversation about, you know, what's going on in their life and, you know, thank them for being a part of our school. Turkey Bingo, we gave away over 15 turkeys to families for Thanksgiving last year during our Turkey Bingo put on by our PTA. So we had a fun night that night. Warren Cleanup Day, we gave back to our community by cleaning up around the high school, picking up trash and just making sure that, you know, the community that we live in is looking the way we want it to look. Family Heritage Night, this was put on by Ms. Henley, our assistant principal. We invited families out to learn about new cultures through our parents and community members. Many of our parents were there presenting. You can see in the bottom left-hand picture, you know, they were doing a dance, learning a dance. We had a great turnout at our Family Heritage Night and we look forward to continuing to do that. Another thing that we did was an ADHD and an ODD Symposium. This again was put on by Ms. Henley, our assistant principal. Something that she was really passionate about. This created an avenue for parents to learn more about ADHD and ODD. We had a speaker that came out and presented. That person was there to answer questions. It was, you know, it provided our families with a resource and the ability to openly communicate with other families that are seeing, that are having the same, some of the same things in their lives. And there were some really powerful conversations. And we plan to do that again this year. It was open to the district last year. I think we really only got Brookview people, so we're gonna work on, continue to promote that because we'd like to have a bigger turnout district-wide for this year. Operation Kindness, this is something that our second grade and I believe Ms. Cook really worked hard on. And so, you know, they took coffee cups from the Green Bean, which is there at Cumberland. and Washington Street. It's a little, I think it's, it was a Warren teacher that opened it up and owns it. So, we took a bunch of their, not the actual cups, but the things that keep your hands from burning sleeves. Thank you. And they just, they wrote words of affirmation. They wrote, you know, kind words on there, just, you know, for anybody that's getting a cup of coffee, just to kind of help pick up their morning. And that was really neat for them to be able to do that random act of kindness. Brookview was awarded over twenty thousand dollars last year, and last year alone, in grants. I don't know what it was prior to me. I know we pushed our teachers hard to write grants, and we received, teachers received classroom libraries, robots, classroom supplies, more ways, and helped to create experiences for our students. We were awarded a ten thousand dollar grant to upgrade our playground to make it more inclusive for some of our life skills students. And we actually have just ordered those materials, and so, those will be installed, hopefully, coming up soon before Christmas break. And so, we're adding a new swing set with the five-point harness swings, shorter basketball goals for our kindergarten and first graders, and a Gaga pit, just for everybody, because the kids love the Gaga pit. Experiences. Whoops, no, thank you, I'm not done yet. You know, our goal, and really, the district goal, is to continue to create experiences for our students. I think Brookview's done a really, really great job of this in a short amount of time. Just last week, again, I said we invited Boomer out. That's an experience in itself. But I really want to highlight that bottom picture. One of our, one of our teachers who's here, Ms. Laura Nelson, wave your hand, did a fantastic job of setting this up. We had, we had a tribute to those who were lost on September eleventh, inviting many of our community members to help out. We had the National Guard to present the flag ceremony, sheriff, police officers, school board members, Dr. Hanson was there, and more, to help this make, to help make it a special moment of remembrance. And to say that it was, that it was powerful is an understatement. The kids really enjoyed it. You know, I think the teachers really enjoyed it. But what was rewarding to me was all of the officers, the National Guard, and all the community members that came to me and said, "Thank you for bringing this to the forefront." And that, to their knowledge, like Brookview was the only one that was doing something like that. So, you know, so when I say that Brookview's bringing the experiences, we are. And that's where we want to, that's where we want to be, and we're gonna continue to work hard to do that. Can we give it up to Ms. Nelson for all of her hard work for that? So, I just want to thank President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, the school board, our parents, our teachers, our upper admin for their continued support and dedication in helping to make Brookview the place where each child, each day, is a success.
Thank you. We appreciate you and keep doing innovative ways to engage our youth, and great job on
I just want to say, keep up that team spirit, because, you know, I believe that school should be fun, and that's what you're doing, is making it fun. And so, now the children are gonna be excited about coming to school, and that's going to promote high academics. So, keep up the good work. Awesome. All of you all are doing an awesome job. Like she said, give yourself a pat on the back. Thank you.
We will now have Mr. Kent to do our CETL certification and recognition of Justin Osborne.
Thank you, President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I would introduce Justin, but there's no need. I think everybody in the district knows who Justin Osborne is. Earlier this year, Justin passed the Certified Educational Technology Leader Exam that is presented by COSIN, which is the Consortium of School Networks, a national organization. We are fortunate to have three board members from the Indiana chapter of COSIN, Mr. Pete Just, Ken Binnick, and Scott Pratt. I'd like, if you gentlemen would come up, they're going to recognize Justin for his
Mrs. President, members of the board, Dr. Hanson, and cabinet, thank you for having us before you today. My name is Scott Pratt. I'm the Assistant Director of Technology at Westfield Washington Schools and serve on the Board of Directors for the Indiana CTO Council. CTO stands for Chief Technology Officer, which is State Chapter of the National Consortium of School Networking, or we'll refer to as COSIN moving forward. COSIN is a state chap, or COSIN is a member-based advocacy group that provides thought leadership resources, community best practices, and advocacy tools to help leaders succeed in the digital transformation.
My name's Ken Bennett. I'm the Director of Technology for the school city of Hammond. Also, serve on the board. Also, I'm a mentor for our aspiring technology leaders that are going through the CTO-to-be program. I had the opportunity and the pleasure of working with Justin over this past year and his journey. I'm really impressed. I was reading your values here and your mission. Those, every time I talked to Justin, those things really stood out to me. So, I wanted to make sure that you're aware that those things are on his mind every conversation
I'm glad to be here today. I'm also the Executive Director of the Indiana CTO Council. Good to see you again, Dr. Hanson. And just wanted to share with you a little bit about what this means. So, we have a program here in the state of Indiana that is going on. It's eleventh year now. It's a program that we started to try to develop young technology leaders. Do you know anyone? We are always accepting applications for that. But it's a one-year mentorship program where we pair this individual with someone who's been doing this for a while, who has the expertise. We work on leadership, and we work on what are called the Ten Essential Skills of the K-12 Technology Leader, which is a national set of standards. So, the Certified Educational Technology Leader credential, which Justin has earned this year, really signifies that he understands not just the instructional side of technology, its integration into a school district, but also understands the technology side, and most importantly, understands that from a position of leadership. That's what the CEDL really means. And that's the CTO-to-be program. Justin stepped forward to be a part of that program. He completed that this past May, and then finished his exam. And we're happy to say that he is one of the most recently certified members of the CEDL exam here in Indiana.
Justin, on behalf of COSIN National and the Indiana CTO Council, congratulations once again on this remarkable achievement. We look forward to witnessing the continued positive impact you will undoubtedly bring to students, educators, and the future of education itself. Justin, we would like to present you with this commemorative paperweight from the Indiana CTO Council. It's appropriate.
And Justin also has received from our National Association, a plaque which I'm sure will show up on his wall that says he's a Certified Educational Technology Leader.
Thank you, Justin, for going the extra mile.
Can we shake all of your hands?
Alright, next on our agenda, item four point zero, we have our Student Council President.
Good evening, President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, and members of the board. This evening, I bring you a few updates about Warren Central student activity. Starting first with our first pep rally of the year, I would say that it was a very huge success. We had lots of students who got to see plenty of activities from our extracurricular clubs, and we also got a lot of engagement from our staff members and interaction with the students, which I believe last year was like one of the big things that I had heard that we should probably, you know, improve on when it came to the pep rallies. So, for us to have a lot more engagement and interaction with the student body this time, it just, it was really nice to know that their voices were heard and that we did deliver for that. We also got to see a few of our clubs, such as the dance team and the athletic teams. They got to do a couple of games that we had them do for, you know, entertainment purposes at the pep rally, and also some dances from the dance team that was also fun to watch. We had a couple of groups such as the Digital Goats, our girls' flag football team, and also our football team throwing shirts into the audience, and that was, it was a sight to see. I also would say that I myself found it very enjoyable. I had a job to do at the time, which was, of course, you know, getting some of our homecoming court members ready to announce who they were and that we should vote for them and everything. And that was, for me to still have a job on the side, but still also be able to engage and enjoy what I was seeing, it made me very proud and very happy to be a warrior. Also, with homecoming, I can speak very highly about this one as well. I would say that it was a very big blowout. We had a great amount of fun, myself included. We also had a ton of people, such as our counselors, helping with the sales of tickets. And we also had a lot of help from our staff members who chaperoned the dance. As far as we are also going with student council, we are also planning some of our final steps with Leadership Retreat, which is basically where we take some of our new members and our returning members to a resort, or we just do like a big event where we are just trying to get them to understand some of the quality skills that it takes to be a good leader, and we're just trying to bring that awareness back to them so that they can use that and take that out into the world. Also, as some of you may know, this, I believe the fifteenth had started our National Latino and Latina Heritage Month, and I got to see a lot of events be produced for them, so I was really happy to see the cultural incorporation at my school. That is all I have for us today. And I can't wait to tell you guys how Leadership Retreat goes and any other successful events that we plan and that we throw off.
Just so you know, just so you know, next year, the Digital Goats are working right now for their fall project on a double-barrel T-shirt cannon, so it's gonna shoot out T-shirts.
I love that. I know a lot of our students were really excited, like everyone was jumping in the stands to grab the shirts. It's like, I love that.
Thank you. Thank you for being the voice and representing the student body and always bringing back to us transparency and keeping us accountable and bringing back the success stories as well. So, that is all great qualities of a great leader. The next on, next on our agenda, item five point zero, is our Mayor Neighborhood Advocate, and she is unable to make it today, so we will go to our Board Correspondents.
President Triplett, we do not have any correspondents today.
Thank you. Business of citizens.
Citizens present?
No, ma'am.
We will now go to our Consent Agenda, which includes approval of minutes, our financial report, payroll claims, electronic payments, year-to-date summary of fund balances, human resources reports. We don't have any field trips, our permission to accept gifts, change orders. We don't have any contracts, our use of school property. We have several listed. For the sake of time, I won't read all of those. Special events, we have none. Conflicts of interest, we have none. I will entertain a motion.
So moved. I'll second.
It was properly moved by Rachel, and seconded by Julie. Are there any discussions or questions? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda, item nine point zero, which is our financial report, our claim registry. I will entertain a motion.
So moved. I'll second.
It has been properly moved by Terry and seconded by Julie. Is there any discussion? That motion passes. We will go into item ten point zero, which is our reports. Ten point zero one, our family engagement grant.
Hi, everybody. President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, thank you for having me here today. My name's Tabitha Jackson. I'm the Family Engagement Liaison Lead Facilitator for our Family Engagement Team here in MSD Warren Township. I'd like to start today by showing you a quick video of our Family Engagement Grant. And this video is just highlighting the work of our Family Engagement Liaisons.
Here at Warren Central High School, as a Family Engagement Liaison, I work with families. If they have a fire, if they're in need of things, I work a lot with attendants, trying to help students figure out barriers that are causing attendance issues. We also give students whatever they may need, whether it's toiletries or supplies. And we're really just a real support system for our students.
As a Family Engagement Liaison, we also coordinate, I have different events here to engage with our families, whether it's academics for fun, just to help bridge that gap well among the community and our school.
As a teacher, the Family Engagement Liaison has supported me in tremendous ways, inside the classroom, outside the classroom, having support for my students, whether it's financial needs, health needs, ways that I can't do it on my own, but it does help lend that support to my students and their families in a way that makes me feel more supported.
We produce produce such as green beans, cucumbers, squash, peppers, tomatoes, and we try to make this available to our families to come in and grab some fresh produce and help out, not only with cost, but nutrition.
We also were given these plants by the Indiana Native Plants
We also were given these plants by the Indiana Native Plants Society, so all of these are local to Indiana, and they are just beautiful when they are in full bloom. But we definitely could not do this garden project without the community partnership we have.
I think for us, because of the fact that, you know, I think when parents hear, specifically administrators, you think of like discipline and things like that. For us, I feel like we're kind of a comfort zone for them because, you know, just the term "family engagement", we're wanting to engage with the families, we're wanting to say, hey, we're here, how can we help you? Versus, you know, your student has these issues, or your student is, you know, dealing with this, we're able to say, okay, what do you need versus just what your student needs? Because if we're able to help the family, that in turn helps the student.
I just love that video, and it just highlights what we're doing. So earlier this year, MSD Warren Township was awarded a grant through NSOURS. This is a five-year grant that we now have access to $100,000 each year to use towards family engagement and really improving family engagement here in Warren Township. There are five LEAs that are part of this grant. The LEAs include Goshen Community Schools, Gary Schools, Bartholomew Consolidated School Corporation, Perry Central, and of course, Warren Township. These five LEAs represent the vast arrays of schools in Indiana from Lake Michigan all the way down to the Ohio River. This grant money can be spent on numerous things to improve family engagement. That does include wages and salary benefits of the coordinator, consultants, staff training, materials, parent stipends, really encouraging our parents to get involved and engaging with schools and really incentivizing their participation. Professional development, national and local conferences, youth mentor development. The grant is based on the Dual Capacity Framework, created by Dr. Karen Map, who is a Harvard professor and expert in family and community engagement. The Dual Capacity Framework describes the objectives and conditions that are essential to effective family and school engagement and collaboration. You can see here that the first one supports educators and families in building trusting and supportive relationships. The second empowers families to assume proactive leadership roles in strategic thinking. And the third empowers educators to leverage the positive impact of family engagement. The big picture, though, what is the big picture of this goal? The big picture is really positioning Warren Township to become a model site for other large urban districts in Indiana and the Midwest. So far, what we've done, we've launched a new series called Lunch and Learn. It's a series for families that's virtual and provides valuable information and really meets families where they are. We've attended national conferences, we're learning evidence-based practices that improve family engagement, and also we're adding to the body of research to family engagement. It's a relatively new area for schools and education, so we're really trying to learn what works and how are we going to best engage our families so that we're reaching our school's goals, whether it's academic or attendance goals. So I'd like to leave you with this message. Family engagement is a strategy. It's not the end goal. If we see family engagement as a strategy to our work, our academic, attendance, and other goals will be met, but we must have the support, the family partnership, the family buy-in to get to those goals. So with that, I thank you, and we are so excited to continue this work and really building upon what has already been started with the Family Engagement Team here in Warren Township and making it shine in the state of Indiana. Thank you.
Tabitha, I have a question.
Yes.
Congratulations, first of all. I see that it was, when we do grants, we always look if it's competitive, so good job with that. That means you put some work into it. Have you all collectively come up with things to allocate the funds to?
Absolutely. So we have a budget that is going to be approved tomorrow with our grant facilitators in SOURS. Some of the items there that we're really wanting to work on is providing professional development, not just for liaisons, but for the entire staff of Warren. Family engagement is everybody's job, and we want everybody to have those skills and the capacity to support family engagement work. We've also, we're also wanting to spend it on pocket devices, the translators, so that our family liaisons can really connect with every family. That's a big goal. We also want to provide money for basic things like postage so that we can send positive notes home to families and really connect with families that we aren't hearing from. It's really encouraging when you hear positive things coming from schools, and we really want to honor that and provide money for that. So we are hoping to get that budget approved tomorrow, and I'd be happy to provide that approved budget to you as soon as we have that.
We appreciate it. Thank you. We don't, I don't necessarily need the budget, but just wanted to just know how collectively you all came up with the gap areas that you were gonna serve. So again, congratulations and thank you for your leadership with the family liaison.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask the question also.
Yes.
With your parent engagement, do you have, I know you're doing professional development within the school building itself. Do you have it with parents? I'm concerned about parents knowing how to track their students' progress. So how do you address that?
Yeah, that's a great question and something that we've been toying with and thinking about. How do we provide this information to our parents so that they're supporting this work as well? And I think we're at a point right now where we're trying to figure out how we do get parents into some of those Wednesday PDs that we're providing for staff as well. Can parents join? They're supporting this work as well. So really, that's something on the table that we absolutely are thinking about and really wanting to work towards. That is definitely a goal of ours. Absolutely. Any other questions? I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tabitha, you have a Lunch and Learn next week.
I do. We do have a Lunch and Learn next week. On Tuesday, September 24th, it is a virtual Lunch and Learn, as all the episodes are, from 12:00 to 12:30. Really excited about this topic. It's how to get the most out of your parent-teacher conference with a highlight of Parent Square and Parent View as well. Really providing capacity for our parents and making sure that when they are going into that parent-teacher conference, they have some great questions that they can ask their child's teacher so that they can support that learning at home. The goal of the Lunch and Learn, though, is really to meet those families where they are. I think the first episode was really great. You had some parents that were on the call. You could tell that they were at work. So they were asking questions, but it was, hold on, let me step into my office really quick. And I loved that. They were able to take the time out of their day to get the information that they wanted, but they didn't have to leave that office, and they were able to get that. And I'm really encouraged by the first one, and I'm really excited for this entire series. We've been really strategic with planning each topic for every month. So we've got the Parent-Teacher Conference, we have iLearn, iRead, NWEA Report Reading and how to support their, ML and WEDA testing in January to support our multilingual families. We've got another one that's Special Education Rights and Terminology, and really just trying to be proactive and really providing valuable information to all of our families so that they can advocate for their child in the best way and have some tools in their belt.
Tabitha, I just want to give a shout out to you. I know on that call, you stayed on after to help a Creston mom. I think you had a relationship with her from East Ridge,
Yep.
but got her all set up, and kudos to you just for being there for our families.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm happy to be in this role and happy to push family engagement further and be the model site for the state of Indiana.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Okay, what grade levels do you cover? Are we, is this just for elementary? Are you expanding it to middle high school? Are you representing everybody?
So I, we are, this Family Engagement Grant is covering pre-K through 12. We have a liaison in every building. There are two liaisons at the high school. I think our main focus is every grade level, but we're really gonna look at that middle and intermediate level. What we've seen so far with our learning, with family engagement, we have family engagement, our families are excited at that elementary level, and for some reason, when they get to that five, six grade level, family engagement starts to drop off, and it shouldn't. We want our families to continue that journey of following their child's education and academic career, so really looking at how do we improve family engagement at the five to eight level in particular.
Do you have a focus on career pathways? I know we have a great Career Center, but a lot of parents are not familiar with what it's all about, and I was just making a suggestion that maybe one of the sessions could introduce them to the Career Center, talk to them about the, all the things that we have to offer, and sort of explain to them that they can even take a tour, or, because knowledge is power.
I agree.
And I think that many times our kids lose out because of that lack of knowledge. So I just want to throw that out because we really need them to focus more on our Career Center and get in their minds a career pathway before they graduate from high school.
I love that suggestion. We have in, I want to say, November, it is a college application and FAFSA night, and throwing the Walker Career Center and really highlighting it in November, I think we can manage that. Absolutely. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, item 10.02, Dual Language Immersion and Multilingual Learners Report. Oh, that was a tongue twister.
All right, good evening, President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, and members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to just give my annual update kind of related to our dual-language and multilingual learner program. Always excited to come and share just some information about these two programs. These do relate to your board goals as well as the strategic plan of investing in relationships with our families and community as well as meeting the needs of the whole child and investing in people. To get us started, I'll talk a little bit about our dual-language program just to give you kind of updates on our enrollment and what that looks like. We're currently still kind of targeting our first through eighth-grade students. In grades one through five, they follow a two-teacher program model where they're learning English and Spanish throughout their day with the content. When we get into, I'm sorry, that was first through sixth grade, sorry. And then in seventh and eighth grade, we start shifting more towards world language, and so a lot of our seventh and eighth-grade students are taking either Spanish I or Spanish II and are earning those high school credits already. Again, you'll notice we don't really have any students for our kindergarten. It's still very challenging to find quality teachers that can teach in Spanish, and so that's definitely still something that we are striving towards. When we look at the makeup of our dual-language program, we currently support a lot of multilingual learner students, or our ML students, and non-ML students. So you can see that the majority of our students are our ML students, and then we still have a good portion of students that are native English speakers that are also participating in the program. So it's still exciting to see all the things that we're doing within that program. I love seeing, going into the classrooms, I know many of you have visited the Pleasant Run in Stony Brook and seen the programs in action, and it's always great to just see the work that the kids are doing and just hearing them use both their, you know, assets they have in both languages. Moving on to kind of talk about our ML program, this gives you kind of an overview of the number of students that we have by grade level from kindergarten through 12th grade. You'll notice that it's 2,424 students. Last year, we were just over 1,900 students. So we have had a huge growth in our population. This shows you over time, from 2019 to present, kind of what our trend has been. This year alone, we're up 27%, so we have grown that much. We've definitely had an influx of students enrolling in our district, which is awesome. I'm excited to have them here, and I would say that this is across the state, too. The state has seen a huge increase of students that have been moving in. I think statewide, they saw an increase of around 10%. So we're definitely above the state in those numbers. To even just kind of continuing to talk about our ML students, I do want to highlight, you know, we service a lot of students in our ML program that come in and they are either at a Level 1 to a 4.0, 1.0 to a 4.9. Those are the students that receive services. But I do think it's important to note that we still do keep track and monitor our students that have exited the program. So this gives you a number of kind of what, who those students are and the number of, the number that we have for each category. So once students reach a 5.0 or a 6.0, they're automatically exited from our program. The state requires us to monitor them for two years, and so you can see, we had 50, we have 54 students that exited from our assessment last year when we gave it in January and February, and then the year before, we had 39. What you'll also note, though, is that I still keep track of those that have moved past that monitoring process. And so we have around 460 students currently still in the district that have exited. They've completed their monitoring, and we still kind of keep track of them. I also include in here the do-not-qualify, so when students enroll, we do screen them. And a lot of times, we have students that exit on a screener test or a test that, when they're first enrolling in kindergarten. And so again, I keep track of them as well, just so that we have record of that. Some exciting news, though, is that the IDOE is finally making some changes to the exit criteria. We are way behind a lot of states. We have had the high goal of reaching a 5.0 to a 6.0 for several years, and they are finally making some changes. What that entails is a 26-page document that I am currently reviewing and hoping to put together some processes and some procedures for us here in Warren Township. Kind of to give you a little bit information about that new exit criteria is that they're dropping it to a 4.3 to a 4.9. So if a student gets the 4.3 or 4.9 on the WEDA Access Assessment, that could potentially flag them as a potential exit. What that requires, though, is that each school will need to create a committee to then also gather data regarding those students, to collect data from their previous assessments, maybe iLearn or iRead. They also need to have, you know, student work, other documentation to support that, that they are ready to exit. And so again, we are hoping to implement this during our next assessment window. So when we receive our WEDA Access scores for 2025, we're hoping to potentially increase that number from 54 up a little bit more so that we can have some more students exiting from our program. So excited to review that and see what we can do for our students. I always like to highlight our number of countries as well as languages. We have 47 birth countries represented, and then it's also neat to see the languages. We have 35 languages within our district. This time, though, I pulled some numbers just so you could kind of get a picture of what those numbers of students look like. You can see that Spanish, we have over 2,000, you know, students in our district that speak Spanish. Haitian Creole is growing quite a bit, over, you know, 367 students that speak Haitian Creole, followed by French, Portuguese, and then Arabic. So again, just for your information so you can kind of see what that trend is. To get to some other things that I'd like to really highlight for our ML students and families and then those teachers that work with those students, is last year, we did a real deep review of our program and tried to identify some areas of things that we wanted to work on and improve upon. One of those was just some things related to classroom teacher support. So these were two documents that were developed to try to help support classroom teachers. The first one, that ML Student Orientation Checklist, is a support document that was kind of created for our ML teachers to use as they work with classroom teachers or content teachers. It gives them kind of a walkthrough of like, what are some of the things a classroom teacher maybe needs to know about a student in order to support them in the classroom. And then the other document is a Newcomer Support for Classroom Teachers, and this one is for classroom teachers. And as I've said, we've seen a huge increase in our number of students. Currently, I think we've got around 35% of our students are considered newcomers in our district right now. And so really, this document is targeted to really help teachers kind of understand what does it mean to be a newcomer. So this document provides kind of an overview of what... So this document provides kind of an overview of what are some behaviors that they may see from when they first arrive, from like day one to six months, six months to a year, a year to two years. And then we also listed in some strategies and supports in either English as well as their native language. So just really trying to give teachers something in their toolbox that they can refer back to so that they have some, some supports that they, um, available for them right away once they have a student. Additionally, um, I love that Tabitha mentioned already, um, just some of those ways that we're trying to engage with families. You know, it's, it's always nice that we have Parent Square. It has 100 languages that are available. You know, we really make an effort to try to get all of our families using Parent Square. It's a really great tool for our classroom teachers to use. They can send messages and in English, their families will receive it in their native language. Families can respond in their native language and so forth. And so it is a great way for us to connect. I was really excited to see our warm website updated. I know last year I made lots of like, please, can we update that and add more than just Spanish? And if you go on there now, you'll see a lot more languages are available. And so that's also another way that we're trying to support and connect with our families. And then lastly, we do partner with LTC Language Solutions. This is a company that we have partnered with for several years now. And they do a great job of, um, just having interpreters and people available when we need them. And so our classroom teachers have access to this, all of our buildings have access to this, where they can call and have an interpreter available on the phone. They also have the opportunity to use video conferencing as well. So they can, you know, also reach out and get somebody face to face, um, via Zoom or wherever it may be. And so it's again, it's another tool that we have available to try to really enhance and support that, you know, school to home communication. So we're really trying to continue to work on that. We also continue to work on building, um, relationships and connections with local organizations. I know that, um, exciting news, we have the Haitian Association of Indiana that is here on, off of Post Road, if you did not know. I know that James Taylor and his team at MCRCC recently met with, uh, this organization just to kind of learn more. We're hoping to try to build, um, a partnership with them and see, you know, what supports they could provide us. We do continue to work with the Indiana Latino Institute, ILI. They're a really great organization that helps us with, um, thinking about academics and education for, um, our high school students. I know we have the education summit that they put on every year. That's coming up in November, and we usually send around 100 or more students, um, to go and participate in that. So that's also really great. And then more recently, we've been able to partner with Mercy Indy. This is an organization that, um, I know a lot of the creators behind this organization are teachers or were former teachers. But we've been able to partner with them, um, for a lot of different things. We, I think in May, we were able to have them come and present to our dual language teachers to talk a little bit about, um, Spanish literacy, just that bilingual literacy component, supporting us with that. And currently they are working with our high school team, um, to help build up their, um, capacity with their instructional model. They're doing some PSYOP training that really goes along with their warrior protocol. That, um, PSYOP is a framework for instruction that has been around for several years. And it is a great model that really highlights, you know, how you should instruct to support multilingual learners, but it's also going to be great for all students. So that's been a really great partnership. And, um, recent, and I guess upcoming soon, they are going to be hosting a, um, session to help learn about supporting Haitian, um, families. And so I know already myself and a few of our, um, other staff members are already planning to attend that, just to learn more of how we can better support that growing population that we have. And finally, um, again, I always like to highlight, you know, our bilingual staff. You know, I've, I've got a picture here of just a few of them. This is not all of them, but we have a great, um, team of bilingual staff members that are in our district that work as bilingual IAs. And we also have Claudia Guzman, who works as our bilingual family engagement. This picture was taken, they were able to meet together during our e-learning day as a team to kind of collaborate and talk with, um, James Taylor and some of his team. And so, um, it was really great for them to be able to do that, I think, and connect and, um, just supporting each other and how they're supporting families. Some other great resources that we have, that top picture on the, the left, is a device that the high school recently purchased. This is a, um, a headset and a receiver that they've purchased to kind of help with large, um, group sessions for interpreting and translating. And so they can hire like one interpreter to speak into a microphone, and families will wear the headsets and it gets interpreted to their headsets. And so they used that not too long ago, and I think it went really well with, you know, trying to engage families and not having to go back and forth to interpreting. It was just seamless and how it was done. And then the other one Tabitha mentioned is those, those pocket talks. So we have purchased these for all the buildings and they currently have them in the main office. I was able to poll a couple, um, of those office staff people to, to give us some just quotes of, you know, what it has meant having that. I love it. It's been a lifesaver. I've absolutely loved it. It's been convenient when parents come in and need translations. I really like what the high school said though. You know, it's been a big help in connecting with families as well as students. I feel like parents come in more confident knowing that they can get the assistance they need without the language barrier being a big obstacle. So again, you know, things that we're trying to do to, to really, you know, help support families. As I said, you know, our newcomer population is growing and, but also too, we've got a lot of families that want, we want them to feel welcome and we want to make sure that we're providing avenues for them to, um, be able to come into our buildings, feel welcome and not having to wait. But, you know, our staff have a device that can help them really engage with families right away. So we're just super thankful for that. But yeah, so I think that's all I have for tonight. I mean, if you have any questions or comments, I would take those, love to take those.
I think, uh, what you're doing is so awesome. And all these devices and everything, I was like, oh, I think I might want to get one. But one question, we had a presenter to come in this year and said that, um, kindergarten is so important to give that foundation. So when they move into first grade, they won't be a year behind. They can be strong first grade, and that sort of helps them move forward in the other grades. And I noticed that we don't have anything in kindergarten. So I'm, I'm looking at what is it, uh, can be done, even if it's volunteers, because that kindergarten is so important. And I think that we need to focus on that. We don't want to leave it out, um, because it can impact the other grades. So do you have any ideas?
Yeah, I agree. And we've actually, we, we do have something kind of in, in plan and motion right now. So we, um, we were fortunate that Pleasant Run was able to, um, does have on staff a kindergarten teacher that she's somewhat, somewhat bilingual. And so she doesn't feel as confident to be able to teach, um, Spanish the way she would like to. But we were very strategic in placing students in her class that we thought would benefit the most. And so she does try to help bring in some of that Spanish. So I would say that we still are working on developing some of those skills in their native language. We also do have a bilingual IA that supports that grade level as well. So we're, we are trying some different avenues of how we can kind of build up their Spanish language as before they go into first grade as well. So yes, definitely something that we're definitely continuing to look at.
Thank you so much because, um, you know, we're thinking about student achievement. And so therefore we think about, if you stop, my mother used to say, if you start off right, you're going to end up right. So we need to, uh, maybe other people can join in with you to try to brainstorm to see what can we do for the kindergarten to try to give them that strong foundation so that we can move forward and, uh, they can, uh, see that it's going to have an impact on those other grades. Thank you though for what you are doing.
Thank you.
Kim, I'm going to say, um, I have personal experience now with this because my granddaughter is in a Spanish immersion class in, um, Lawrence Township. And she can count to 20 in Spanish and she just talks, she'll be talking English and all of a sudden insert a Spanish word. And, um, they went out to dinner at a Mexican restaurant and the waiter said something to her in Spanish and she responded in Spanish and he, he took him back a little bit because,
That's wonderful.
You know, so, um, so I will, she's a kindergarten. So I will say, I will say, not this year, but go steal Ms. Lopez from. I didn't say that.
Secret saving me.
Thank you so much. And it is so important that we are able to make our, um, all of our families, no matter what our culture or our background is, feel welcoming. When I went to Nicaragua, I experienced firsthand like, wow, is this how newcomers feel when they come to our country? So I appreciate that you're doing a great job in a much needed area. So thank you.
Thank you.
We have, next on our agenda, our construction update. Do we have video today? Our PowerPoint?
We have both.
Okay, split the baby.
All right, President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I want to present to you our construction update for September. Uh, this is the, the fourth year we've had the, the pleasure of, uh, bringing the construction update in this form. And, um, our focus will continue to be not, will continue to, um, show our community how we're transforming our, our school community, one building at a time, but also, um, how we invest in the Warren story. So we want to make sure that we touch on those things during the course of this school year.
Hello, Warren Township in the far east side of Indianapolis. My name is Marcus Clayton and I am the proud chief operations officer here for the MSD of Warren Township Schools. And welcome to season number four. That's right, we got renewed of Inside Warren. Our goal is to maintain financial stability while investing in efficiencies and environment. All you have to do is look over my shoulder and you see those six letters? Warren, and we all know what that represents. Warren Will, the pride of the east side, that's who we are. And today we get an opportunity to, to continue to show you how we transform our school community, one building at a time. But we have some new projects this year. And we're going to start off today by going to the Warren Performing Arts Center, which was open in 1983, and it was time for a much needed renovation. So we're really excited to see that new facility. We're also going to get a preview of the new Hawthorne Elementary. You heard me, the new Hawthorne Elementary. And we're going to prepare you for our grand reopening, taking place on the night of September 26th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. But we'll talk about that a little bit more. And then finally, we're going to come back here to Warrior Stadium. And just in case you haven't heard, the Warriors have started off 3-0 and they have yet to give up a point. I hope I'm not jinxing them, but I have a good feeling as we get ready for our homecoming game this weekend versus Lawrence Central. But we're going to finish here and we're going to show you our brand new lights. I didn't make a mistake, our brand new stadium lights. You're probably wondering, why are you showing us lights? Well, after you see this video that we put together for you, you're going to know exactly why. So you know the magic words, sit back, relax, get your Warren Will popcorn, and come inside Warren.
I'm Eric Matters. Welcome to my crib, the Warren Performing Arts Center. Open in 1983, 1,016 cubic square feet of theater space, seating over 1,300 people. Come on inside. Newly renovated in 2024, you might notice some changes when you come on in. First of all, some of you have been here before might recognize the carpet's a little different. Now, the original color was burnt orange. What some people don't know is those were the original school colors when it opened in 1926. However, today, we're a little more modern. Black and gold to match the current warrior look. We also have more seating for our patrons, also black and gold. Mycelial areas for families and folks to cluster as they're waiting on the show to start. Bathrooms newly renovated, new tile, and a full seating area inside. Let's go look at the new seats. This is the Esch Auditorium, named after Thomas Esch. He's the guy in the painting in the back there. Along with the new carpet coming in here, we also have these new wider seats. Black and gold to match the school colors, wooden handles, lip-up handles for ADA seating, as well as still holding 1,000 patrons to watch our shows. Some more exciting renovations coming over fall break. All new curtains. Out here in the house, we're going to have the brand new banners with the Warren W on them. We're going to have all new curtains onstage, including a brand new mane. And if you like all the renovations, you should come see them in person at our fall shows. In October, we have Broadway Fright Night. Come see Broadway stars sing spooky songs from classical musicals. And then in November, if you couldn't get tickets to the Taylor Swift era's tour, come join us for Tay-Tay Dance with DJ Swifty on November the 2nd. Well, we hope you enjoyed the renovations and you'll come out and join us for a show. Marcus, Marcus, what are you doing?
That boy can sing. He good.
Mozart, Marcus, what are you? I'm pulling the plug on this one.
Hey Eric, what's up man?
Marcus, we need to get ready for a show. You don't have to go home, but you got to get out of here.
Oh, well, you took the words out of my mouth, but I'm sorry, man. I was just trying to raise a little money because you know, Inside Warren doesn't run itself, right? You know, but anyway, I apologize, um, my lady's here. All right, we'll see you later.
Come back and see a show.
I sure will.
Good and terrible.
Greetings. I'm Greg Butler, proud principal of Hawthorne Elementary, and I want to invite you and your family to come out on September 26th for our grand reopening. Doors open at 5:30 and the program starts at 6:00 and it runs till 7:30. School tours, snacks, games, real family-friendly, uh, activities for everyone to come out and enjoy. Let's go take a sneak peek. There's so much for you to see on the 26th. One area we're excited to share is the new library. The students have been enjoying it and it is really student-friendly. But you have to come on the 26th if you want to see it as well. We can't forget about our awesome new STEM lab and our amazing STEM teacher who's been doing a great job in here. Please come on the 26th and you can see some of the cool things that your students have been doing every day. We are so excited about our new gym, which is our largest and the biggest part of our construction project. It gives us tons of opportunities to have school events and also events with the community. We are so excited about it and we can't wait to have you come join us in here on the 26th. Remember, doors open at 5:30 and the program starts at 6:00. Again, remember, you're invited. Can't wait to see you here. Go Hawthorne.
Thank you.
All right. I need to borrow those, um, sunglasses. Next on our agenda, um, is business of citizens. Present yellow cards.
We have doing yellow cards tonight.
Thank you. We are down to our action items. Brian, okay. Yes, you are 12.01, 02, 03.
Okay, President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Last month, board meeting, I brought before you for discussion, uh, a series of policies, some new, some updated. They were kind of in three chunks. So the first one is that, uh, 1422.01 is drug-free workplace. And that is, uh, mirrors our other two policies on drug-free workplace, but applies to administrators. And so, um, uh, just mirrors that other language and, uh, you know, pulls from and relies on the, uh, federal Drug-Free Workplace Act and, uh, Safe Schools and Communities Act. Then we have policy 1662.01. Then we have policy 1662.01, threatening and/or intimidating behavior towards staff members. That is new. And then the other policies related to that, 3362.01 and 4362.01 are also on the same subject, but those are revised and updated. The new one basically cross-references our nondiscrimination policy, as well as our anti-harassment policies, which is key, and stipulates what needs to be reported to whom and in certain circumstances, whether that also involves law enforcement. And then finally, we have 1520.08, employment of personnel for extracurricular activities. And then 3120.08 and 4120.08, which are revised policies. Primarily, those are including, if you recall, cardiac arrest training for head coach, assistant coach of an athletic activity, marching band leader, a drama or musical leader, or sponsor of any extracurricular activity in which the students might have an increased risk of cardiac arrest. So that about sums it up, unless there's any other further questions.
Yes, I want to ask, for the intimidating behavior towards, you know, what was that again? Can you read that so I can get it correct?
Yeah, threatening and/or intimidating behavior towards staff members.
Yes, you know, sometimes, I want to know, people can carry that a little bit too far. When I say that, are they going to call the police every time, you know, a student gets, you know, disrespectful? You know how kids can be disrespectful? Or does it have to be something very extreme? Because I don't want kids, I mean, police having to be called just because they need to be calmed down, maybe by a counselor or something, you know? But if it's threatening, you know, really threatening, yes, police can get involved. But I don't want teachers to say, oh, this child just is acting crazy and saying all kind of stuff, oh, we're going to call the police. So I think there should be something a little bit more specific about when the law enforcement gets involved, so that teachers won't just call them all the time just for every little minor incident.
Gloria.
Yes.
Part of it is that this policy is required by state law.
I understand that, but we need to understand.
As it's written, it's required by state law.
Where are we going to go with this? Are we going to call the authorities as soon as a student, you know, say a cuss word or something, you know? Or, you know, does it have to be extreme? I'm just saying, I don't want kids being called, the police being called on kids that, you know, kids sometimes can be upset and act out, you know? But we have counselors in place that can go and say, okay, calm down.
I don't disagree with you, but unfortunately, that decision's been taken out of our hands. So if it rises to the level of intimidation or harassment, then we have, we are required to make the report. And I get it's frustrating, like 100%, but this was, this was something the General Assembly decided last year, and they passed it. I mean, I testified against it. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
I understand what, I understand what they're saying, and I understand the gist of it. But we as a school community, you know, even though that is a law, we have to understand when we're working with children, that sometimes, you know, we, instead of calling the law enforcement, we call a counselor. That's what the counselor is for.
I agree with you, but the General Assembly chose not to.
I know, but I'm talking about, we as a school district can do that. If the counselor is called, and they cannot seem to calm that student down, then the law enforcement. I think it should be a step in between there, because we have a lot of new teachers. Some of them may not be aware of how to deal with students with certain behaviors, and all of a sudden, oh, oh my gosh, I'm intimidated, oh, they just cussed at me, oh, we're going to call the police. I mean, we, I don't want it to be like that.
I agree with you, but as we are elected officials, we are bound, and we swore to uphold the state law, and this is state law.
I'm not against the state law, don't get me wrong. I am not saying that we don't abide by the state law, but I am saying.
But these things, these were argued in the State House.
They're written as is, but I, I'm confident we do have systems in place
Yes.
within our schools to help buffer and protect our children. And with the PD trainings, that's where that comes in, so teachers can be aware when they're working with, you know, with our babies. So I think we're all in agreement with you, and that's why the leadership we have, we have chief to work with, our officers to know. That's just like with DCS. We are all mandated reporters, so we have to report. Now, where that report goes after that is up to that department, so.
And I, I'm sorry.
So some things we're mandated to do, but it is systems in place. So although you file a report with DCS, they can screen it in or screen it out. So that's where I think our systems come in place. So we are in agreement with you, but as this policy stands, it has to be written according to law, so we have to abide by that and then go back into our systems internally and see how do we educate and train our teachers to be aware, to know. And also, to be fair, what may be intimidation to one person may not be intimidation to the other. So we have to take that into accountability. After Rachel is done, then we will entertain a motion.
And I wanted to kind of reiterate, making a report doesn't necessarily mean, like, there's a difference between making a report and having the state police have a conversation with one of our kids. Like, that's not a binary sort of reaction. But there was a lot of discussion two years ago with the General Assembly, wanting to get a tally of the number of times that this happened, and they gave that a year, and then this is what they have settled on, is that the reports get made. I don't know if they didn't think that the tallying was going correctly or what, but this is where we ended up.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on policy 1422.01.
So moved.
It has been properly moved by Julie and second by Howard. Are there any discussions? We will now have an electronic vote.
Can I have one more discussion, real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gloria, I didn't skip over.
Yeah, I know.
Policy 1422.01 is on drug-free workplace. Is your discussion on this or the intimidation?
It was intimidation.
Okay, so it's not, yeah, on this one. So if there's no discussions on drug-free workplace, we will, we're ready for, to vote. That motion passes unanimously. We will now go into action item 12.02, which is our policy 1662.01. I will entertain a motion, and that is for threatening and/or intimidating behavior towards staff members.
So moved. I'll second.
It has been properly moved by Rachel and second by Julie. Any discussion?
Yes. Many times, we can approve things and not follow up. What you did say was, we, there should be something in place, but I don't care if it's a professional development with our teachers to say, okay, this is something that has been a law put in place, but we're giving you professional development because we don't want it to have a negative effect on our students. And so therefore, we need to talk to the teachers. I think there's a need, because we have a lot of new teachers coming in. I hear, I heard that from a lot of our principals. So therefore, there need to be a professional development in regards to this, so that, like I said, if we start off right, we'll end up right. So we need a professional development so that we can address this. So once we pass this, okay, we have to pass it, but we need to think about, when are we going to put in place the professional development? And that's to the administrators and things that are here, to allow the teachers to learn how they can handle this situation.
Brian, I think for a point of clarification and for easement and for anybody that is watching as well online, can you tell us the chain of command? What is the policy and procedure? So someone feels as though they're intimidated, the report is made, then what happens after that?
Yeah, of course, we do have a complaint process, so both, both informal as well as formal complaint investigations, and of course, we take all those seriously. I will say that depending on the circumstances and the fact that this policy weaves in and cross-references nondiscrimination and anti-harassment. Oh, can you not, can you, I'm here?
Yes.
Because this policy cross-references nondiscrimination and anti-harassment, depending on the circumstances of a certain situation, that could involve Title IX protections as well. So under, under the auspices of HR, we do, we do train staff on Title IX, because what that would involve, it would be also investigating potentially these types of issues. And that depends too, whether it's adult staff involved or students. Either way, we can handle either, either type of situation. And so that's a whole nother, of course, we have a huge board policy on Title IX, but sometimes, that may come into effect and often deals with situations that have to do with discrimination or harassment situations.
Okay.
Are you saying that you are going to put professional development in place for teachers? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we have, we have been training teachers and administrators.
But I just wanted to point out, because I think, from what I hear Ms. Gloria saying, her unreadiness with the report, she is correlating that with directly, a report is made, police is called. But I just wanted you to understand, it is a chain of command. Now, if it is a policy and procedures in place, and unless it's something like really egregious.
Right.
Then, you know, our SSOs or SROs can be activated. But it's not an automatic, just because someone felt as though they were intimidated. There is an investigation process.
Yes, yes, very detailed one that we have in board policy. And so we, we take all complaints seriously, and we would have to do a thorough investigation.
And the reason I'm putting emphasis on this is because there's a lot of cultural differences.
Yeah.
Like she said, what's intimidating to one may not be, and so what I'm saying, I don't want kids to be pointed to on a negative basis because they don't understand the culture, you know? And it's not that extreme where it should be reported, but they just feel, oh my God, they did this, and it's timid, you know? I just don't want that, because then when children start receiving a lot of negatives, then of course, they're going to feel low self-esteem, they're going to feel bad about themselves. We want all students to feel good about themselves, okay? And just because someone don't know how to deal culturally with that type of individual, like we have, like, different people coming in, like you said, from different countries. So therefore, we don't want to give that negative. That's all I'm saying, that we as a district, we just need to train people to identify what is really truly intimidating and what's not, because some people will just take the littlest thing and, and run with it. So that's, that's my point. So hopefully, this will not die, where we just pass this and not set something in motion for professional development for our teachers and staff. That's all I want. I want to see it move forward, where we can have some support in place for our students. I'm thinking about the students, you know, because they need that. And parents feel really bad if their kids are, you know, downplayed or pointed out, you know, all the time, because certain people say, oh, they intimidated me. So then you're going to have problems with the students and the parents and the community.
So I think that's important. That's why we have our SOP in place, so, thank you.
I would like to add, maybe we can invite Gloria to one of the next training sessions, because I have attended one of those training sessions.
The Title IX one?
Yes. I have attended one, and it does cover a lot of those things.
I would love to come, yes. You know I would say so.
Please check your computer screens, it's time for the vote. That passes unanimously. We worked on that one. We have to work for that one. Next, action item 12, 12.03, policy 1520.08, employment of personnel for extracurricular activities. Are there any discussions?
I'd like to make the motion.
If not, I will entertain a motion. All right, it has been properly moved by Terry and second by Ms. Gloria. No discussion? Well, we're ready for our vote. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. And just like last time, it's a perfect segue to Marcus Clayton.
Yes. Great, Marcus, you have action item 12.04, 12.05, and 12.06.
Thank you, President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. For action this evening, I have three policies for revision, starting off with policy 5340.01, student concussions and sudden cardiac arrest. Last month, I shared this with you, and I know there were a few questions. So I just wanted to make sure I go back over this, this first policy specifically. Again, this is centered around student concussions and sudden cardiac arrests, and really it's just the expansion of an existing policy that has been in place on the athletic side for the past 10 years, and that was based on guidance from the DOE, state law, as well as the National Federation of High School Sports. And that includes the concussion and head injury information that we are required to provide at the start of each season to participants in extracurricular activities, as well as the sudden cardiac arrest information. Now, the state has asked us to expand that to other areas such as performing arts and also other co-curricular activities. And this includes marching band, drama, as well as it relates to or it affects the coaches and leaders from these specific groups. Personally, I think that the first step should have been requiring our physicals, because in order to detect whether or not someone has a heart issue or some other type of health ailment, that physical's a critical component of that. And then the education comes into play as well. I know I've been outspoken about this for years, just on the, the non-athletic side, the performing arts side and other groups. I think they should be required to do physicals as well. But nevertheless, this also requires us to continue to record the, the maintenance or the, the trainings that, that are required for our, our sponsors, our coaches that are involved. I know the athletics, they maintain theirs in the athletic office. We will have to have a similar setup as well for our other activities. Our response to suspected injuries, concussion specifically, understanding what that looks like in terms of just the, the symptoms when a head injury is taking place. Understanding that if a student has a potential concussion, that they will need to be evaluated by a healthcare provider, as well as understanding that they will not be able to participate in that activity at the minimum for 24 hours. And after that 24 hours, they have to receive clearance from that healthcare provider that diagnosed them. That is a conversation I've had with parents over the years, because sometimes what will happen is they will have an unreported head injury, they'll go home, mom or dad will take them to the emergency room. They'll go home, mom or dad will take them to the emergency room or they'll take them to some type of clinic. That healthcare provider they see, that becomes their primary healthcare provider. So in terms of returning back to competition or returning back to that activity, they have to receive clearance from that healthcare provider that, that parent initially took them to. So in other words, it's out of our hands at that point, which that's okay. But sometimes, let's just say some of those healthcare providers, they, they have different perspectives in terms of what that looks like. So, but also with sudden cardiac arrest, and I know Mr. Dorsey, we talked about what does that look like? Because when we think of sudden cardiac arrest, we think of some of the immediate type of symptoms such as sudden collapse or no pulse and no longer breathing. Some of the other red flags that they refer to specifically is if we notice our students are suffering with, from dizziness, lightheadedness, or extreme fatigue, we know those can mean a few different things. But however, those are just some of the early red flags as it relates to sudden cardiac arrest. So make, make sure that we, our coaches and our sponsors understand that. And then just some of the training requirements that are required around CPR and AED. So that is the revision of policy 5340. President Triplet, on mine, I would like to proceed to policy 8452. Policy 8452 is the revision for AED expectations, which again, we've already successfully implemented that years ago. But it just talks about our responsibility as a district to make sure we have functional AEDs throughout our, our different venues as well as have, provide venue specific action plans where we're able to show our patrons if we have outside events that come in as well as at each building during the course of the school day that they understand and know where the AED is located. Also, I shared with you that we have AEDs in every school currently. And we, with the great work of Kim Howard, we make sure that we provide the annual maintenance to make sure that they're functional, make sure the pads, because there is an expiration date when it comes to some of those AEDs. We have replaced quite a few over the last two years. But again, we have 12 at the high schools, six each at each five through eight building. We have one at each elementary, the online academy, Highlander, Renaissance, MCRC, and we have three at Porter Services. And then again, the training requirements, which if you hold an Indiana teacher's license, you are required to be CPR and AED certified. So part of this expansion is making sure that our, our non-licensed, whether it's coaches or instructors, to make sure that upon hiring them, that they have that same type of training in place. And then finally, policy 8455. This is relates to the requirement for coaches and training as well as references in IHSA reporting. And probably about 15 years ago now, the National Federation of High School Sports required our coaches go through several different trainings around ensuring the safety of our, of our student athletes. That is now expanding to, to other areas. But specifically, as I mentioned last month, this includes again, training, training and certification requirements, sudden cardiac arrest training, which we just talked about, as well as just the liability protections and background references. Just so you know, and again, I mentioned this last month, that if you coach football in Warren Township or really anywhere in the state, there's eight different trainings that you have to complete. Now, when I coached 20 years ago now, you didn't have to complete any trainings, right? So eight different trainings. Mr. Humphrey, have you taken all eight? Okay, good. Because if not, you can't coach this Friday. And for our other non-football sports or other sports, they have to complete eight, six trainings, six trainings. And those consist of concussion in sports, student mental health and suicide, sudden cardiac arrest, heat illness, protecting students from abuse, CPR. Those are the, the six. And then again, if you're a football coach, you add tackling as well as the required emergency action plan. And then finally, the reporting, I know Rachel, you and I had a little brief conversation just about that. We are required as we hire new coaches and that information is on the ihsa.net site. If we have coaches or sponsors, we need to make sure they pass the necessary background, background checks as required by state law and verify that the individual has an IHSA accreditation and check for any suspensions or any type of past misbehavior or requests in contact for references as well as again, confirm that, that accreditation. And then we're also obligated to report to the IHSA. Now, they have a database on their .net site. I used to have access to it, but that's typically your, your athletic directors that have access to, to that portal. But that's where all the reporting is housed now.
Did I hear you say that all sports, whether it's marching band or cheerleading, that you recommend that they have a physical?
Cheerleaders, they, they are required to have physicals because they fall under athletics.
Okay.
The performing arts, the performing arts side, they, the state has yet to require as part of their participation that they complete a, a physical before participation. I'm glad that they've included the educational component for the adults. I think that's a big step. But I think, again, when we're talking about previous existing health conditions, outside of what the nurse may have for that student on record, that adult should be aware of that as well. And typically, we use a platform called Final Forms. We're able to track and monitor that on the athletic side. But on the performing arts side, again, this is a big step. But when you have kids that are out in 100 degree weather carrying an instrument.
Yes.
That's no different than what a cross country runner is doing. That's no different than what a football kid is doing, so.
That's right.
I will entertain a motion for policy 5340.01. It has been properly moved by Howard and second by Kevin. Any discussion? If not, time for the vote. Get out of here with that.
Hey, quick question, Marcus, while we're waiting on that. For the AEDs, so we've got them scattered throughout the high school so they're within three minutes of the soccer fields and three minutes of softball and we're, band is marching now, et cetera.
Correct. And luckily, when this kind of came out last year, we were able to get ahead. And I know just working with Matt, you know, specifically, if you just think of just, and again, I'm just, the high school right now, I know we had some, some things we had to add as well with our, our five through eight buildings. But you know, you think about that west side of the high school where the softball field is located, they won't have time to run inside.
Right.
To get an AED. With that being said, where we house that, we, you just can't leave it out in the sun either.
Right.
So we have to be very strategic in terms of where we not only put that, but then also being able to communicate if we allow outside groups to use our facility. So part of their facility usage is being able to have that information present so, so they know in the case of emergency.
So should we, at one point in time, get to the point where we've got like a cross country course again? Because that's the one where you have to have a mobile. Do we have one that's able to be mobile or no?
So the cross country coaches, they have one.
Okay.
Both, both of our coaches, because obviously their training is.
They're everywhere.
They're everywhere. And typically, you'll see, not just because they can't run anymore, but you'll see the coaches on bikes following the kids.
I completely told Mr. Miller you said that, just so you know.
Yeah, don't tell Mr. Miller I said that. Don't tell him I said that. But we ask that they carry the AEDs with them whenever they have our athletes traveling offsite.
Thank you.
What about marching band? Do they have access?
Ms. Gloria, hold on. This, let me pass this motion and then we'll get to that where that discussion is. I'm sorry, before we lose this motion. That motion has passed unanimously. We will move on to policy 8452. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Time for the discussion.
Okay, what about marching band? Do they have something available for those? Because they, okay.
They do. They have a mobile unit because again, they move around campus. They, they're everywhere from the west side of campus to the stadium.
Right.
And everywhere in between, just depending on the day. So obviously, when they're inside, they have access to the AED machines that we have located indoors. They have one, a mobile unit. And then again, if they're on that west side of the building where they typically practice, we have one housed in that softball area as well.
Good. That has, that's good to know that we are really doing a lot to provide safety for our students. That's very important. Thank you.
That has been properly moved by Rachel and second by Julie. We've had our discussion. We're ready to vote. Ready? That motion has passed unanimously. I will entertain a motion on policy 8455.
So moved.
It has been properly moved by Terry and second by Julie. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready for the vote. That motion has passed unanimously. Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
Ms. Allison is now up. You are action item 12.07 and we will be going over policy 5350. I'm sorry. And you have 12.08?
I just have two.
Okay.
Policy 5350, suicide, student suicide awareness and prevention. The change here is to reflect that the parents have the right to review any educational materials we have on bullying and suicide prevention. Besides that, it's just minor grammar changes. And the second one is board policy 5517.01, bullying. And there's three big changes here. One is prioritizing the safety of the victim, so just adding provisions around that. The second is a timetable for reporting of bullying incidents to parents of students who are both targeted and the bully. We have five business days to do that after the incident's reported. And that's after, of course, we've investigated and, you know, come with our findings of that. And then the third is allowing, the same one as the previous policy, allowing the parent of a child to review any materials we use for bullying prevention or suicide prevention.
I will entertain a motion for policy 5350.
I make a motion.
It has been properly moved by Gloria and second by Kevin. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready for a vote. That motion passes unanimously. I will entertain a motion for policy 5517.01, bullying. It has been properly moved by Julie and second by Terry. Is there any discussion? If not, we are ready to vote. Thank you. Thank you. Next on our action item is 12.09. We have Matt.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
For your consideration this evening, we have board policy 6320 and board policy 6320.01. Policy 6320 is our primary purchasing board policy. 6320.01 is an existing board policy pertaining specifically to the use of reverse online auction sites. So I had a question that came up between last board meeting and this board meeting of what is that? And so that's a form of procurement that we honestly don't have a history of using at our school district, but we could. It's used for commodity type purchases where you're going to have a high level of competition on typically a standardized product. So essentially, you contract with a service to post the school district's need online. And then bidders can bid on the price. It's called a reverse auction because instead of bidding upward, like in a traditional auction, they're bidding downward on the price that they would be willing to provide that product to you at. So again, we don't have a history of using it, but we could in theory. That's the primary change is moving it out of a standalone policy and putting it into our primary procurement policy. And then there are also a series of revisions to the policy, a lot of them similar to what Allison just covered, that are wording or restating our standard purchasing thresholds, which is $50,000 to $300,000. We're in quotes territory. Above $300,000, we'll be doing requests for proposals or bids. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for policy 6320.
All second.
It has been properly moved by Howard and second by Rachel. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We now have action item 12.10 as Kent. And after Kent, Ryan will be up next.
President Triplet, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, last month, I brought to you policy 7540.02, web content apps and services. The biggest change in there was referring to website, websites and apps and services and not just to apps and services amongst other grammatical corrections in the policy. Be happy to answer any questions? If not, ask for your vote.
I will entertain a motion. You a motion? My second. It has been properly moved by Kevin and second by Gloria. Any discussion? If not, we are ready to vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Good evening. Policy 8210, name school calendar, but as a reminder, we're not changing the school calendar. This policy just seeks to take advantage or potentially take advantage of flexibility to change the way we report our calendar to the state or to the DOE. So instead of reporting by actual days, we would have the flexibility to report actual instructional minutes and replacement of days. Happy to answer any questions, but I seek your approval at this time.
I will entertain a motion for policy 8210.
So moved. All second.
It has been properly moved. It has been properly moved by Julie and second by Rachel. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote.
Thank you.
That motion passes unanimously. Um, we are now at, um, agenda item thirteen point zero. And that's our discussion items. We will have Kent, um, thirteen point zero one. And then Kent and Kate thirteen point zero two.
Thank you, President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. It's wonderful to see you again. You know, despite Jennifer Pope's, uh, pleading, I'm gonna try to keep this short. She really wanted me to stretch it out as long as possible. We're really good friends, by the way. Uh, just to give you some idea where we are, you know, there's been a lot of great discussion about data tonight. Um, sometimes that can be a challenge for us, uh, depending on where the data is stored and where we're sending it. Um, and also who has access to that data. So, you know, we, in, in the spring decided, hey, let's, let's see what's available. As you know, right now we have, uh, frontline student analytics, also known as Five Lab, um, more commonly. Um, one of the things that lacks is teacher dashboards and reports. So in March, we decided, well, let's find out what's out there. April, we wrote the RFP, we issued it in May. We did receive nine responses. Uh, on June fourteenth, when the RFP closed, um, we had the RFP team evaluate those responses and the references and decided to bring in six vendors for demonstrations of their product. Those happened, um, at the end of July and the beginning of August. And then we notified the vendors of those results, August twenty second. And in this case, the winner was EduPoint, which is also the provider of our student information system. And then, uh, we came to an agreement on the, uh, amendment to our, uh, agreement for our SIS agreement, um, at the end of August, which brings us here to, um, the school board meeting. So we had a cross-functional team, uh, classroom teachers, folks from curriculum, counseling services, some school administrators, a whole host of assistant superintendents. The superintendent, uh, was also involved. And then we had some representation from technology. So we had a pretty broad range of requirements. Uh, this is just, uh, one of the tabs on the spreadsheet that we sent out and just a few of the, uh, requirements. So there were over a hundred total requirements, uh, ranging from, uh, implementation and training all the way to, uh, functional requirements and data. We got those responses from all of the vendors. You can see here is an example of, uh, Synergy's responses to a couple of our questions. We also, uh, we mentioned COSIN earlier, the Consortium of School Networks. They have a, an assessment tool that we asked all the vendors to fill out, which gives us an idea of how good their security is, since they're gonna house all of our student data. Um, so we had all of them respond to that. Fortunately, they all passed, uh, easily, uh, those COSIN requirements. Then we weighted the, the rubric. So we had forty percent weight was on the most important p- portion, which is how does it function? Technically, how does it work? And how does it, uh, present and store the data that users would see? Another important piece was, of course, the pricing. Uh, and then just general requirements for, uh, implementation, training, support, project management. And then, of course, security and references were another portion of that. So in the end, the results came out, uh, um, EduPoint was the winner. They edged out Renaissance Learning. That was another fine product. Um, one of the advantages of, um, EduPoint is we don't have to move the data. So it uses the same data that's in our s- student information system now. So that decreases some of the complexity. You know, one of, we've had a couple of third-party, um, data systems now. Originally, we had Decision Ed, and then we switched to Five Lab. Um, just an example, when we first, uh, brought Five Lab up, they thought we had fifteen thousand students. So we had to work through some process for them to understand how, what our data looks like and how we concurrently enroll students, et cetera, so that they weren't counted more than once. So, what does it look like? So this is the biggest benefit, I think, of all. The teachers get access to their students' data. Not only do they get access, this is Teacher View. This is a picture of Teacher View, which the teachers use each day. So you can see across the top, they've got their gradebook. This is where they take attendance. They see their students. Well, the analytics portion is just right there in Teacher View. They don't have to sign out into another system and call up that data and wait a day for data to show up from Synergy to another system. It's just right there in their everyday view. So they'll have access to the data. They'll have access to charts and graphs and, um, you know, breakdown. As you can see in this example, these are some samples from, uh, EduPoint's website, math, reading, science, and writing. It depends on what level you're at as a teacher, as to what sort of information you'll see. They'll be able to see, you know, state testing, uh, information as well. It's also embedded right on the student information side, which is what the administrators use. So you can see it's just right there in the menu. I drop down, I can just see analytics. So very easy for them to get to. So we have, uh, two modules that we purchased. One is analytics, the other is their, uh, MTSS module. And this contains the early warning system. So this will be available to teachers and to administrators. Um, so this will give them any heads up that maybe somebody's heading in the wrong direction. So this is just one piece of the MTSS module. There are other pieces of it that we could use in the future as well. Right now, we're just focused on the data side and the early warning system. But eventually, we could roll out some other features. I just, you know, we, you should have gotten a memo on the pricing that, um, you know, EduPoint was pretty aggressive. So I'd just give you some idea. It, you know, it, it lays it out there in the memo, where really it's about the same price. So, uh, you know, the pricing aligns with what we have currently. We're getting a whole lot of functionality for our teachers and eventually some additional functionality down the line in MTSS. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this RFP.
When would it go live? Since obviously we're not voting on it till next month.
Yes. So the day after we would, if we're able to approve it, yes, that's when it is dated to start in the amendment. So we would have, depending on how tonight goes, Rachel, we would probably start having discussions with them tomorrow about what that looks like.
So is this combining two data systems we already have?
No, it's eliminating one data system and consolidating in it to our one database that's our student information system. So it's the same company. They're gonna look at the exact same data and tables in the same database. So we don't have to move data, right? So right now, what happens is today happens in Synergy. We have a script that runs that pulls that data and sends it to Five Lab. And then overnight, Five Lab pulls it in. So our users can't see what happens, what happened today until tomorrow. Whereas with, with it all being housed within the same database, it's just available immediately.
Can I ask a question? Or I have a question. So if a student enrolls today, they would be not available to open up the Chromebook and use it until tomorrow. But with this new system, the same day they enroll, they could already have access?
Yeah, if they're, yes, so somebody would have access to their data. Yes, cause they'd be. Right, because that involves the, going to Microsoft and Google to create their accounts. Yeah.
Thank you, Kent.
Thank you. If you don't mind for this next one, I'm gonna bring some muscle with me. So in a lot of ways, this is similar to, uh, the data RFP. You know, we, we've had, um, learning.com for four years now. We're in our fourth year. And it has some strengths, it has some weaknesses. But we recognized last fall that we really need to take a hard look at it to see what value we were getting out of it. So we had some focus groups, uh, broken up into three groups, K four, five eight, and nine twelve, obviously. And then we reviewed, uh, Kate and her team and I reviewed together that feedback. And we decided that we really needed to evaluate, um, digital citizenship alternatives, much like we decided to do with the, the data system. Kate established, uh, teacher tech team that was very helpful in this process. And we began researching and evaluating digital citizenship's options. We looked at learning.com, of course. We also looked at Kahoot. I mispronounced that. It's Kahoot. And, uh, NearPod. And, uh, we, uh, looked at the applications, evaluated them, and we asked the teachers to score them, uh, for each one. And we ended up selecting NearPod as the best option. So I mentioned, learning.com has some issues. Our teachers felt like the lessons, uh, at the higher grades were too juvenile. They were really intended for, um, lower grades. They, uh, students tended to lose focus. For Kate and me, the problem was the reporting is, was just woefully insufficient. It was almost impossible to get good data on who was actually presenting the lessons in their class. And even more difficult to understand the impact those lessons were having on the students. So there was no way to, to really judge where were they before the lessons and where were they after the lessons? So typically, I would have to request a CSV file from learning.com. And there was just a lot of background noise in there, a lot of data that was, uh, of no use. And frequently, teachers were shown at the wrong schools for some reason. Not really sure how that happened. As I mentioned, we couldn't really track student usage and certainly couldn't track their progress. So here's an example of some of the responses that, uh, we received from teachers and who they decided had the, uh, uh, the best, uh, format for delivery. Some of the things that, um, you know, they mentioned about NearPod. It, uh, you know, requires interaction and discussion from the teachers, not just playing a video and having the students watch it. The teachers have to be part of that. It's, uh, it's an assignment, not like free time or game time. Uh, teachers can engage more with the class. So, uh, you know, NearPod has an option that requires student responses and prevents skipping. So a lot of things that, and it gives some, uh, teachers some, uh, additional abilities there that learning.com didn't have. It allows for better student engagement, one of them said. And also felt like, uh, NearPod's lessons were engaging and offered, um, a variety of digitally enhanced questions. So, so for us, uh, the key was that we have reporting available for both students and teachers. So we can, we can see the growth that students are having. We can ensure that teachers are using, uh, these, uh, lessons as part of their day-to-day, uh, teaching. So what's interesting is NearPod isn't just a digital citizenship, um, uh, platform. It offers, uh, many other things. You can see some of them listed here. Last but not least, some of the important things that we've talked about here at the bottom of Twenty First Century Skills, SEL, financial literacy, there are a lot of lessons in there that we will take advantage of too. So anything else that we would point out? Now, the nice thing that, um, NearPod provided for us is, uh, scope and sequence. So giving us an idea, so this is just an example of K two. They provided it to us for all, uh, all grade levels. And, um, theirs are more narrowly focused, um, one of the other problems with learning.com. Often they'd say, here's a digital citizenship lesson, and it's useful for K through eight. So you can imagine how effective a lesson for kindergarten would be for an eighth grader, right? So, um, so these are more narrowly focused to particular grades, which is helpful. So they, it's provided in English, it's also, uh, provided in Spanish. Pricing, uh, we locked in, um, three years of pricing. You can see them here, sixty-five thousand dollars a year, paid annually. Compare that to learning.com, which is just roughly fifty-three thousand. So it's very similar to the, uh, data RFP again, where the pricing is, is, they align, maybe not as close as the data RFP, but we're getting much more value for the dollar. We're also getting additional features for that extra twelve thousand dollars a year. So how, how are we gonna roll this out? So you can get an idea here, quarter two, uh, we're gonna pilot with this, with select teachers and counselors. So we'll involve counselors in this too. Basically, gen- see who's interested in doing it. Well, we'd really like to have folks that are very technical, but also non-technical people to get a feel for how it works for them, the ease of use. Uh, we'll do training for those selected teachers and counselors. It's a train-the-trainer model. And, um, and then we'll have that, uh, uh, core team start using the NearPod and digital citizenship lessons and then collect feedback. Quarter three, uh, school teams will start using NearPod as a classroom tool. We'll do professional development for all teachers on the digital citizenship lessons and then launch, uh, NearPod Digital Citizenship in quarter four. So our learning.com contract expires at the end of the school year, so it aligns very well with that too. Any questions on NearPod?
Two. Um, the first is, so we're gonna be paying for both programs this year?
We will.
Okay. Which, I mean, that's the sort of overlap that happens. It's just.
Yeah, so technically, we paid for this year's learning.com out of last year's budget. Would be paying for NearPod out of this year's budget.
Oh, so no, that's two different years. I always thought. But, um, so these Twenty First Century Skills, the other things that they have, are those modules we would have to buy? Or are those already available?
They're, they're included in the price package.
Yeah, included.
Okay, so like, it could possibly be a thing when we're looking again at SEL and things like that, that we might roll off something else.
These were, this, uh, worked with Laura as well on this. So we had, um, the SEL lessons that were, um, that we looked at are supplemental lessons that our counselors are using to, to provide, um, additional tools and resources for our students in the smaller groups, heading things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before you go, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the cue.
Okay.
But anyway. Um, uh, you, you kept going to, you had a sample here of, uh, Spanish. And, and there's probably, maybe it goes without even saying, but are other languages involved in this thing?
I believe it's just English and Spanish.
I'm sorry?
Just English and Spanish.
English and Spanish?
Yes.
Okay. Any particular reason why there's other languages weren't in there?
I don't know. I'll have to ask NearPod. They have not translated to any other languages.
You weren't able to ask, you weren't able to get, uh, those plugged in there? They had, like you said, they would have, be able to answer that, whether they have their. Let, let me ask you this. Did, do you have any, uh, multi-language members of our staff involved in your program?
Yes.
Analysis? Okay. Okay.
They were excited. Uh, sorry, they, they liked it as well. We have, um, representation that's inclusive of, uh, counselor STEM, SEL. We have our ML teachers. We have, uh, and then also K two, K eight, sorry. So they were, they looked at the product with us. So they all felt like the NearPod was the, um, they liked all three, but they understood we weren't getting all three. And they liked NearPod the best.
And what languages was learning.com available in?
Just English.
I think there were some in Spanish. Not everything was in Spanish, but.
Primarily English.
Okay, so like, it didn't happen to also have Haitian Creole, just to throw a language out there at random?
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to just stay on this just for a second. So the other competitors, uh, also, just, just Spanish and English? That you looked at?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, because earlier, I think our ML folks showed that we have in the, in our district, and maybe I saw it wrong, but I saw a hundred languages that was expressed. And we're, we're satisfied with just these two. I'm, I'm, I'm having a problem with that. I'm having a problem with that. While we couldn't stretch those, those, stretch those, what do they call? Stretch those producers of this?
Yeah.
To include more languages. Because I just, I just think we would push a little harder for that.
Yeah, well, we could, we could push. What we have now doesn't do more than what NearPod does, so we wouldn't have gained anything by sticking with learning.com. So it's distinguishing between what we'd like and what's available, really. That's pretty standard, English and Spanish right now, unfortunately. There, you know, there just weren't options beyond that, those two languages.
Okay, thanks.
So if we do, Mr. Howard, we have 35 languages, and then the 100 parent square gives us a translation in 100 languages.
Yeah, but is that compatible with this thing here? And Kennedy has utilization for that?
So how do we compensate if we accept, if this passes? How do we compensate for the other languages? How do we overcome that barrier?
Now we're bringing up the serious muscle.
Uh-oh. I'm in trouble now.
So if you look at those numbers, I think we have just over 300 students, 350 students that speak Haitian Creole, and then the number goes down from there. So when you're really looking at our overall school population of 11,500, those numbers are small. A couple of things we have to think about when we're thinking about our multilingual learners is part of our responsibility as a public school is to help them learn English, right? So if they're in our dual-language program, we're helping them develop in Spanish and English. We're really trying to support students with learning English and that, and develop that in school. The other thing to know is that many of our students who come speaking a different language cannot necessarily read and write in that language. For example, Haitian Creole, reading instruction in a lot of those countries does not start until third grade. So oftentimes, we'll think just because our students can speak that language means that they can read and write. And so what the teachers can do is pair, use visual supports, make sure that we're doing hands-on, that those Psyop skills that Kim referred to is really how are we teaching and instructing to make sure that we are enriching language and exposing to vocabulary and then connecting with things like visual supports to, you know, to help grow our students. So unfortunately, in the world of curriculum, not even all curriculums, like a reading or math curriculum, can we get even in Spanish. So the world of anything is they're focused on English. And so we really consider that, try to look for other languages. But beyond Spanish, most companies really don't expand beyond that, unfortunately.
And that's clear, and we understand. I think overall, just trying to, when you answered some of it, what are we doing to compensate and to ensure that that gap is being filled? I mean, technology is what it is. What they offer is what they offer. But what are we doing internally to make sure to bridge that gap that are, all of our languages are represented and supported as they're learning our language? But, so if that makes sense. But you...
That's as visual supports, teaching and introducing vocabulary, you know, working with our ML staff and collaborating with the Gen Ed teachers to make sure our students are supported.
Thank you. Thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. We are now into our closing comments, and I will start with Ms. Gloria.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, and have a wonderful rest of this week.
Kevin, you don't know what to say, do you?
Do I dare comment? Well, I think it was a clear display that if you want to see passion over here, you start talking about how we're educating our kids and where we're leading them to, and you will find that passion. So that runs throughout the board and the community as a whole. And thank you, and that's why we love it. And that's why we're here.
So the next time we meet will be after fall break. So everybody have a wonderful fall break and get some rest. And thank you for everything you do. Terry?
I was just thinking, I can't even believe that we're already through the first semester. Where is time gone? Thank you, everyone. It was great to have the children from Brookview, and their mascot seemed like it was brand new. But congratulations to Justin. I really appreciate the reports, all the insight. I know that we're really working a lot with our ML. And I just have one thing from the discussion that we've had. I really feel like we're really trying to bridge the barriers between our kids and make sure they're there. But if we're being able to give our students things in Spanish, I'm kind of thinking about some of the testing resources that the state has, why that's not available in the language of some of our students as well. So with that, I close. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Brookview's showcase was very good. A lot of energy, a lot of pride. I want to commend Clayton and his crew for those change reports. I'll tell you what I saw. And what I saw was that we had a lot, quite a few savings with East Ridge and Hawthorne. They came in with a lot of savings. I thought that was pretty cool. Not a lot of money, $2,400 here and $400 here, $4,000 here. So I thought that was pretty good. They weren't really, there weren't a lot of, how do you say? What I, you know, change reports are where we have to, they ask for more money because there were some things we did not see that needed done, and all of a sudden, here we go with this process, and we've got to buy a lot of other, a lot of other stuff. We didn't have a lot of that. Of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven change reports, same reports, we probably had to make up about $100,000 worth of additional money. So I think that was very low, and I thought that was good. So I want to say, good job on being able to recognize that. That just goes to how well we've specked out a lot of the work that we've got to have done. And that's pretty cool. I enjoyed the football game the other day. Nobody can beat our defense yet. We've, you know, zero, zero points for the opposition. I do want to say, too, the family engagement is a very vital element, combat multiplier, if you will, in the way we, we address the challenges of our community and our students. And so it's a real strong element in our, in our, in our district. So if there's any, if there's any naysayers out there about, we don't need family engagement, we can do it our own, no, we got to connect with the community. But those folks, they do a tremendous, tremendous job. And so we have to just keep that in the back of our mind. Other than that, I'm done.
Rachel?
There's this pause. I feel like, you know, for Ms. Pope, we should like go on and on and on, right? That was the request? No. She's, she, I'm backing. Home Fest was amazing. It's cross-country senior night, so it was great to be out there for the girls and the boys' teams. Yeah, I have a senior, so it was great being out there. But that's, that's a nice thing that they do every year that goes well with Home Fest and the game, since they're already there helping out with Fun Run. I just wanted to put out there that the Indiana Education Equity Coalition's Fall Conference will be on November 9th. I believe it's downtown in the ISTA building. So I don't believe anything's gone out yet. ISTA helps a lot with that, with that, and so they'll be pushing that out to their members once they're ready to do that. But we've got some great keynotes lined up, as well as some other great things there. So if anyone is interested in grabbing, going to the Education Equity Conference, save the date for November 9th.
All righty. Wrapping up, I just would like to say thank you, Jennifer and Mr. Butler, for the Farm to School program that was held two weeks ago. And thank you for supporting the BIPOC farmers. They were really excited to, in off-season, kind of what we call it, to still be able to provide some resources to them. So you could have went outside and went to larger vendors, but I appreciate that being your focus point. The families were very grateful, having free choice. Learned a lot culturally, what the families like and, you know, what they didn't like. We provide greens almost at everything, but that wasn't their thing, you know? So you have to learn how to adapt and adjust and be, not be cookie cutter. So I just wanted to give you a shout out to say thank you for that. Attended the bargaining... Seminar? MCRC's gala was great. It was, I think we had over 600 people there. Everyone seemed to enjoy themselves, and always good to get that little brain break and that, you know, self-care. The game was great. And for the part that I was able to see, I didn't see Ms. Gloria or Mr. Howard, so I think they were hiding from me.
I sent out an email saying, where were you guys? And the answer?
He said, where are we?
Okay. I missed the memo. But I just want to wrap up to say two things. You guys, over break, please take some time out for yourselves. It's important, so you can come back refreshed. And do not forget, the Fall Festival will be at MRCRC October 1st. Our goal is to provide each family with 35 pounds of free, fresh produce. So please, please, please get that out to your families, so they can come out and be able to have some groceries to kind of help supplement that time where the babies are at home. With that being said, thank you for everyone, Cabinet Chief, everybody, for staying here with us till 9:36. Enjoy the rest of your night with your families and be safe. Our meeting is adjourned.